Judge according to your will, or don't judge according to your will. So we pray for conviction on top of wisdom. We pray for righteousness. We pray for love. We're to, we're to love that which you love, and you love people. And I pray that we would make decisions that are right for the people. I know that's the heart of this council, and I pray that it would be seen in every action, every discussion. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us for our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Moody. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durya.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Mayor Ames. Today, we have one proclamation. But before I read that proclamation, I would like to say at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session considering matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551 dot 072 of the Government Code to wit specific land owned by the City of Beaumont, south of West Cardinal Drive, and east of I-10, more specifically, the approximate 2.049.36 acre tract of C. Hillibrant, ABS 28 tract 10 Jefferson County, Texas. Today, I will be reading a proclamation whereas in times of crisis, people in the Red Cross Southeast and Deep East Texas chapter come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. And whereas in 1881 Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission to prevent and alleviate the suffering of people. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. There are millions of people across the United States who volunteer by donating blood, funds, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters, donating essential blood for accidents and burned victims, heart surgeries, organ transplants, patients those receiving treatments for leukemia, cancer, or sick-of-cell disease. The Red Cross supports service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life. The Red Cross also assists with saving the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills. And whereas, Red Cross work to prevent and alleviate human suffering, which is vital to strengthening our community's resiliency. This month of March is dedicated to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by these words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. Now therefore, I, Robin Mouton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as American Red Cross Month in Beaumont and encourage all citizens to give back to our community by reaching out to help and support the humanitarian mission. Accordingly, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Sign Mayor Robin Mouton on today, March 1st, 2022. Accepting this proclamation is Chester Jordan, Executive Director, American Red Cross of Southeast and Deep East Texas, and others. If you would please come forward and accept your proclamation. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you also.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you very much for your very kind words and for this proclamation. The Red Cross has been around a long time. And you mentioned something in your proclamation that I want to focus on, and that's our volunteers. There's a nimble in my shirt, and I'm staff. I work for Red Cross, and with Natalie Warren, who's our disaster program manager for this area as well. But the vast majority of folks you see on TV, somebody mentioned Ukraine earlier. If you'll notice on TV at night, you've been seeing Red Cross on, on the TV. Vast majority of the folks, 90-plus percent of the folks you see running are volunteers. There are community members, there are community leaders, there are neighbors, there are friends, there are relatives. There's the folks who live down the street or across the way. And they respond. They respond to a time of disaster. And unfortunately for our area, we live in a great place to raise, raise our family, to live and work and play and pray. But we also live in, in an area, particularly over the last five-plus years or so, where we've had a lot of disasters. Yeah, I have to tell you that. And I will give you a real quick stat, and that's all I'll give you, just one. Red Cross, this particular chapter is one of five chapters in the Texas Gulf Coast region. There's three regions in the state of Texas, and there's 62 regions in the nation for Red Cross. Where this chapter, this region, Texas Gulf Coast region, over the last five years had more major disasters than any other region in the nation. Our chapter, this community, are only second in the number of major disasters in chapters, which is 243 of them, in the nation. The only one that's number one is a chapter in California with the number of wildfires. That is it. I mean, that tells you something. And we're very fortunate, our community not only have Red Cross, but also have our emergency manager folks in our emergency manager offices. You know this already, and I'm going to tell you something you already know. That is, you have one of the best emergency management operations in the state of Texas. You have Tim and where Shaquena, she's right here, there she is. And they've been at the forefront. I worked with that office back during Katrina, Rita, and Ike days. You know, when we worked very closely with them when Chief Shelton was there, Pat Grimes was there in emergency communications. You know those names. Mickey was there at the chief, Fire, Fire Chief then at that time as well. Steve was your merch, was your city manager. I mean, we go all the way back, and you've had to have one of the best because you're at the tip of the spear. And so you're very, very fortunate. So thank you for your leadership and supporting their office and the things that they do every day, day in and day out, because it's so critically important that we do that. So again, Red Cross is there. We're there in the good, the bad, and the ugly. We're there during the major disasters. But the thing we're at more often, day in and day out, 80% of our time is house fires, is home fires. We respond to, we provide emergency food, clothing, and shelter, and that's Natalie Warren and her team. Natalie and them are the ones that do that. So at night, sometimes you hear them say, hey, Red Cross is responding. What we mean by that is we respond in a very specific way, and I'm going to have Natalie say a couple of words real quick.
I think Chester really summed it up. I just want to say thank you for the continued support with everything, especially Shaquena and Tim and everyone here in Jefferson County and Beaumont that supports us. I greatly appreciate it. My team, I have a specialist that I hired that works under me that is supporting, just because we are in overload, just like Chester said. He tries to go as many places. We literally are splitting up, trying to go different places, when at one time we could go together and knock things out. And, you know, it takes a village for us to push our mission, and without volunteers and the support of all of you, we could not do that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Just real quick, this chapter, you mentioned the Southeast and Deep East Texas chapter. At one time, if you go back, we were formed 100 years ago, in 1917. If you go, all these little communities had their own chapters. They've been merged over the years. So there are 17 counties in this chapter. And we cover a lot of territory and a lot of disaster-prone territory. And we couldn't do that without the support of our community leadership. We couldn't do that without the support of our, our board. Many of you know Scott Thompson with Market Basket. He's the chair of my board. He has been for the last three years. I won't let him go. I won't let him leave. But we can, we preach the support of our elected officials. It's because of your leadership that allows our emergency managing, allows us to do the job that we need to do, day in and day out. Be it that family that's got the house fire at 2:00 AM in the morning, that's lost everything they ever had, and we're able to respond. But we're able to respond because you support us. We're able to respond because there are donors. We're a nonprofit, just like any other nonprofit in the nation. Very large nonprofit, but we're still a nonprofit. So I want to thank you, many of you I know I've worked with for many, many years. Councilman Getz, we've been at the front lines. Councilman Samuel, we've been at the front lines many times. So thank you, Mayor, for your support and your commitment and your engagement, because it makes such a difference in our community, because without you, I don't know where we'd be. So thank you very much.
Chester and Natalie, thank you so very much for the work that you put in, in our community. We're so appreciative. And Shaquena, for what Shaquena does at the emergency management. We are, we're so grateful. So thank all of you for all of the work that you do. And Tim, thank you. So now's the time for any citizen, if you wish to speak on the consent agenda, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Give it to the clerk to the front of the room. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. May I have the reading of the first item, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, item number one on the agenda actually includes two ordinances. The first ordinance is an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Texas by changing the zoning of property presently zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial District and RMH Residential Multi-Family Dwelling District, highest density, to GCMD II, General Commercial Multi-Family Dwelling II District, for the property located at 6030 and 6040 Concord Road, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty.
Thank you.
Let me read, Mayor, just let me read the second ordinance. The second ordinance is entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a mini-storage facility in a GCMD II, General Commercial Multi-Family Dwelling II District, for the property located at 6030 and 6040 Concord Road in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Concord Mini Storage LLC would like to rezone the property located at 6030 and 6040 Concord Road and is requesting a specific use permit to allow a mini-storage at this location. At a joint public hearing held on February 21st, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended five to zero to approve the request to rezone the property from NC and RMH to GCMD II, and voted five to zero to approve a specific use permit to allow a mini-storage facility at this location, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval as well with the conditions included in the memorandum.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried.
Just to clarify, that was the rezoning, and now we'll need to vote on the, the second ordinance, the SUP.
Okay. May I have a motion on the second zoning?
So move for approval.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the second zoning? Please signify.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who's second? Was it Councilmember Getz?
Durya.
Durya, thank you.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Okay. Mayor and council, item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a healthcare training facility in an RCRH Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District for a property located at 2005 Broadway Street in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant, Tana LaFleur, is requesting a specific use permit to allow a healthcare training facility at 2005 Broadway Street. At a joint public hearing held on February 21st, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended five to zero to approve the request for a specific use permit to allow the healthcare training facility at this location with the condition outlined in your memorandum. The administration recommends approval of this item with the condition outlined in your memorandum as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with the one condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Now, reading of item number three, please.
Mayor and council, item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an adult daycare facility in an RMH Residential Multi-Family Dwelling Highest Density District for property located at 1945 Sarah Street in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Jalana Martin is requesting a specific use permit to allow an adult daycare facility at 1945 Sarah Street. At a joint public hearing held on February 21st, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended five to zero to approve the request for the specific use permit at this location, subject to the conditions listed in your staff memorandum. The administration is recommending approval of this item as well, subject to the same conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes. Mayor and council, item number four is to consider approving a three-year contract with WorkQuest for the grounds, maintenance, and litter removal in the Central Business District and to other specified areas throughout the city. Now, WorkQuest, formerly Texas Industries for the Blind and Handicap, TIBH, utilizes private, not-for-profit, community rehabilitation programs, or CRPs, under the Texas State Use Programs known as Works Wonders. This exempts political subdivisions from competitive bidding requirements. For this agreement, Beaumont Products and Services, or BPS, located in Beaumont, will be providing the services to the city on behalf of WorkQuest. BPS has been providing grounds, maintenance, and litter removal services to the city for the past 25 years. Grounds, maintenance services, including mowing, edging, sweeping, and litter removal for the Central Business District and other specified areas, as listed in your staff memorandum, are included. Under the current agreement, the cost to the city is an annual estimated cost of $169,754.40 for fiscal year '21. The proposed annual cost of the new agreement would be $175,651.68, which equates to approximately 4%. Services for heavy cleanups would have no increase, and there is no increase in price allowed for the term of the contract, which is three years. The administration is recommending approval, and funds are available in the general fund.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, because of the relationship, I need to recuse myself of this item.
Okay. Councilmember Felschah will recuse himself, and Councilmember Durya.
I have a question. Okay. On page 10, it says, it has a list of different locations, and, and it says how many containers they have. What are these containers? Are they like the big giant cans, or dumpsters, or what?
Yes, sir. So throughout the downtown CBD, we have trash containers throughout. And so part of the contract would be to service these on a regular basis.
Okay. And what exactly are the other specified areas throughout the city?
So the contract is roughly split into CBD, which is the downtown area, and the airport. So if you go to, let's see. Yeah, page 10, actually the same page, is, you'll see Beaumont Municipal Airport, and that outlines the scope of work for that area. You'll also see on page 15, the price breakdown, or the estimate breakdown between the airport and the CBD. And finally, if you go to the, the very end of the staff memorandum, there are appendix listed, and you'll see the, the outline of the CBD area. And again, a description of the airport area is in the contract.
But all of these are, so that's what they mean when they say the other specified areas?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried with one exception. Councilmember Felschah. Thank you. Now's the time for any citizen who wish to speak. If you would like to make public comment, please make sure that you filled out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. When she call your name, you will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on when it's time for you to speak, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
Sorry, Eddie Allen, 9695 Gross Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon to council, the mayor, city attorney, city manager. I'm standing before you just for some things that I've mentioned before and have not seen any resolve. One of the things is because March is Red Cross disaster, I ask about a, a system in the city, in the county, where you could be alarmed, and I was told that it was too expensive. However, in October, in my neighborhood, in Amelia, there was some damage, roof damage, other kinds of damage. I don't know that it got any press. Orange did, because the tornado went through there. And I'm still working with the insurance company, trying to get my roof done. So if that alarm system had been in place, with us being a mile and a half from ExxonMobil, that would have alerted us that something was coming through. And I know somebody must have known something, because at the airport, there weren't a lot of planes moving that day. One zipped in really fast, like a mosquito after their prey. But I would ask that the city consider that again. It's in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and we're susceptible to tornadoes, windstorms. So I would ask for that consideration. The other thing is, back in the summer, I asked for a water report. I did get this, but if I could get the TECQ, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If citizens are privy to that from the City of Beaumont, because I still have sediments coming in my water in Amelia. And I know there was an emergency sewer something that went on the last time I was here in January. So thank you for your service, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Erin Reynolds, 6945 Salida Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and our city staff. I've come to you again today seeking a resolve for Stacy Lewis. One of the things that I'm excited about today, I don't know what the resolve was, but I'm glad to see Mr. Chris Boone seated where he is today. And again, I'm asking you to bring a resolve for Stacy Lewis. She was forced into retirement, and I believe that you all can make the difference. Let's get that resolved. Thank you so much.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. It's Councilmember Comment, and I will start with you, Councilmember Neal, today.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everybody to get out and vote. I think the polls are open till seven o'clock this evening, so please get out there and exercise that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Samuel.
I will just join in that urge in asking everyone to get out and vote.
Councilmember Felschah.
Thank you, Mayor Greed. In light of the Ukraine situation and the assault on democracy, please take this freedom that you have seriously and go vote, and be in prayer for the Ukrainians and what they're going through. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I want to know if possible, and if in the near future, can a city council member actually give me opportunity to get a second to do a workshop on the different boards and appointments we have? I have some appointees that have spoke up to me, and some of the boards we have appointed to, they haven't had an actual meeting, and they just kind of want to know where we at on it. So I would like to see if we can possibly do a workshop and have a discussion item on, you know, where we currently at with the boards and appointees, and what direction we trying to go in it. It's not something you have to answer me with today, but I would just like us to consider that in the future so we can kind of all be on the same page. You know, with me being fairly new to the council, I want to make sure I give them accurate information on why we have these boards appoint, why we have these appointments, and what's the goal we're trying to reach with the appointees. Because some of the appointees aren't showing up, and some of my appointees are calling me, want to know what's going on and what we're, what we're trying to accomplish with these boards. The second thing I want to know is, I know the city, we cite homeowners for not maintaining our grass. I want to know if the railroad for not maintaining the easements and right-of-ways, can they be cited as well? Or it doesn't work like that, or how does it work?
Right. So the railroad operates under essentially different rules. We have had success working with the railroads to try to maintain. Sometimes it depends on who's supervising the particular area, which can change out depending on, you know, the, which railroad it is and at what point. But the short answer is, it's, it's, we can't simply go and cite the railroad the way we can private property owners, because they operate under different rules. But again, we, we try to maintain relationships with those railroads to try to do the best we can to keep them maintained. to try to do the best we can to keep them maintained.
Okay. Well, a group of citizens came to me, and I told them I would act, so that's why I'm asking that on today. And the last thing is, if possible, we can get an update soon about where we at with the current transit contract. I know it was recent turnover over there. We just kind of want to know where we standing and where we at currently with the transit contract.
Okay. I believe they're meeting on the eighth of this month.
Okay. I'd like to know kind of the results of that meeting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Turner, I will second your request to have a discussion about our boards and our advisory boards, because I share some of your same concerns. Some of our, some of our boards are not meeting. Some of them are meeting, but the meeting's actually being run by staff as opposed to the chairman of the board. Some of the boards don't have appointed members showing up. Some of them haven't shown up for a very long time. So we kind of need to get our hands around all that. If we're going to have boards as mandated in our city ordinances, then we need to make sure they're operational. The other thing I'd like to say is, Councilmember Felschah, you mentioned Ukraine. I also want to share that there is a tremendous battle going on over there. It's a war of naked aggression. It is echoing the same sort of thing that we saw in Europe that led to World War II. Civilians are being killed, neighborhoods are being bombed, government buildings are being destroyed, communication centers are being targeted. It is unbelievably bad. And so all I'm asking us to do today is to encourage our federal government to provide as much aid and support as we can to the Ukrainians, and for all of us to pray for their safety. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Duria.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone. As most of y'all know, my mother's funeral was last Friday. It was a beautiful service. Thank everyone for your phone calls and cards, text messages, letters. It was really appreciated by my family. Mayor, thank you for your letter, and for everyone that showed up. I really appreciate it. And also, I want to welcome Mr. Boone up here, sitting to my right. Look forward to working with you.[1617.12][1617.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. And with that said, Mr. Interim City Manager, have any comments?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. And city attorney?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I would also like to say that Mardi Gras is over. As of Sunday, and it was a great turnout despite the rain and despite the cold. And as you could see, all of the streets are clean like nothing ever happened. And I want to thank a great staff for what they did. And there were no accidents, everything was safe, and Mardi Gras is over. Also, make sure that you get out and exercise your right to vote. Polls are open until seven o'clock tonight. Also, Taste of the Triangle next door. The doors open at 5:30, and I think it's open until, I guess, all of the food run out tonight. It's put on by the Chef Association, and it support a lot of local charities in the city. Also, Soul Purpose, it's a stage production that will be playing at the Jefferson Theater this Saturday at 7:30. You can get your tickets at the Jefferson Theater. And again, pray for Ukraine and that this war will end, because I think we will all see some end results that we don't want. So keep Ukraine in your prayers. And also, I would like to thank Kimberly Rusley for the interview that she did during Black History Month. And also, on last night, there was a podcast that she did with myself and Dr. David Willard and Mr. Troy Marsall, the owner of Sarah Street Wellness Center, and also the first African-American mayor of Orange, Mrs. Belfast. And just like to thank Kimberly and Six News. That's all we have for today, and thank you for attending, and this meeting is adjourned. 2:06.